Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioner meeting this January 14th, 2016. I'll ask my, our county administrator to take the role.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. We are joined this morning with Mr. Chris Story representing the county council's office. And to my left, Mary Rathke, serving as your clerk of the board. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. You all please rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the first order of business is citizen communication, and it is indeed rare when we don't have a card here, but I have no cards. So onward to a public hearing. Mr. Krupp.
So I might file a card, just.
No.
That was a resounding no.
Even though you are a citizen.
That's true.
As we all.
But this sounds like a career decision to me. We do have a very light agenda this morning, and the first item, of course, is a public hearing regarding a proposed board order that involves a petition for dissolution of the Estacada area county service district for library services. And Mr. Chris Story will explain this one for. After I do this, I'll announce the board will recess as a Board of County Commissioners and reconvene as the Estacada area county service district for library services for this item. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. This is, it could be characterized as housekeeping, and it could be characterized as dramatic, depending on how you want to play it. As the governing body, the Estacada Library Service District, you are responsible for this district that was created for the purpose of assisting the city of Estacada and the surrounding rural area to construct a library. The city came to the county back several, almost 15 years ago, and asked the county to support them in this effort because they wanted to be able to borrow money to construct a library, and they thought it would be inappropriate for just residents of the city to pay for that debt when it would benefit the area surrounding it. So we created the service district that had boundaries coterminous with those of the Estacada School District. And then after formation of it, it did not have a permanent rate. There was no operating monies involved. However, they then had a vote to pass a general obligation bond to the district. That passed. That money was collected by the service district and then used to support the construction of the current Estacada library. That had continued for several years. However, in, if you recall, 2008, 2009, the county also formed a countywide library district of Clackamas County that was used to support the operating costs of all the libraries within Clackamas County. As part of the relationship and incentive for that to happen, the board agreed as part of the winding down of general fund contributions to libraries to make a contribution to pay for the debt associated with the construction of the Estacada library. That money was deposited in an account, but due to the terms of the bond, it could not be paid off until this year, this fiscal year, I should clarify. The money was paid off. We've finished the audit. There is now no outstanding debt and no need for this district. So staff is recommending to you that we dissolve the Estacada Library District. And that's petition that you see before you would do just that.
So everybody in Estacada agrees with this, I assume?
Indeed. In fact, a part of the winding up process would be that the district would convey ownership of the library building, which is currently held by the district, to the city of Estacada. And it would not impact their taxes negatively in any way.
Commissioner Bernard.
So when you said, "We created a district," we put on the ballot, and the voters voted to create the district, right?
The odd thing, you, the district didn't need, yes, there was a vote to create it, and there was a vote for the general obligation bond. It was actually all pretty much simultaneous.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioners, any further questions about this before we open the public portion? All right, and open a public hearing, and if you want to speak on anything here today, you should turn in a blue card, but I see none, so I will close the public hearing and ask for motion.
I move, we approve the board order for a petition for dissolution of the Estacada area county service district for library services.
Second.
All right, Commissioner Bernard with the motion, Commissioner Schrader with the second, Commissioner Bernard.
I just wanted to comment that this is a long time coming. I actually thought we had dissolved this quite a while ago, but it's great, and congratulations Estacada for completing this long process, and look forward to working with the library district, countywide library district. Actually, is it countywide library district?
It is, it is all of Clackamas County excepting Johnson City.
Okay. So almost a countywide library district, so.
Almost, yeah. All right, Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, so just one comment. I just was reflecting back when shortly after the library was built, there was a storm, and apparently one of the drainage basins plugged and flooded the new library, so, you know, they went through a lot of grief. I think that was 2010 or '11, I believe that happened, so, but they got it all back up, and it's a nice library, and I just want to congratulate the city of Estacada for their success in building a library.
Yeah, I have been, I've been in that library several times, and very impressed with it, with the layout, and also, as is typical with libraries, I really appreciate the attentiveness of the people who work there, and they're great people. All right, any further questions or clarification or comments? Mary?
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes 5-0. Announce the board will adjourn as the Estacada area county services district for library services and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. Mr. Krupp.
Okay, this next item is a public discussion item. It is consideration of a resolution that would declare the intent to reimburse the county and its partner emergency responder agencies for expenditures related to the replacement and upgrade of the C-800 emergency radio system. And we have Deputy County Administrator Laurel Butman here to present this one to you.
Thank you, Don. So what we're doing today, we're a little bit out of order on this because we won't be approving the valid measure title and language for a little bit yet, but federal tax regulations allow us to declare an intent to reimburse when we're putting out a bond like this for expenditures made before the bond is approved by the voters. And because this system is so old, it's going to lose vendor support in 2017, and it's fast becoming obsolete, folks are already, the C-800, Clackamas County Radio Group has already purchased some radios, but also working on some site work so that they'll be prepared, should the general obligation vote pass, to actually get this project done in a timely manner. So what we have before you today is a declaration of intent to reimburse. We will be coming back to you later. You'll remember that you did hear earlier that the C-800 group had asked the Board of County Commissioners in the county to, on behalf of them, because they cannot float a general obligation bond, on behalf of them to float a general obligation bond for the voters. They are doing the project, they are taking care of all the education and all that stuff. And so they asked you to do that, and you said, "Go ahead and prepare the stuff," and this is a part of the housekeeping to prepare that stuff, that, ready it for the ballot in May. So, and I wanted to remind you that this is a coordinated effort with Washington County because we share a radio system with them. So both counties will be going out for a GO bond at the same time in May, and so it's a very coordinated collaborative effort to update this whole system. And so that's what you have before you today. There may be some folks here in the audience that want to speak to you from Clackamas C-800 Radio Group to thank you for your assistance with this. And unless you didn't have any questions?
Questions, Commissioners?
Well, I do have, well, I could probably save it for after the comment.
All right, so we'll open the public portion of that, and I do have a card here from Leslie Taylor. And come on up, sir. And we're gonna make it ladies first, so.
Good morning, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners. My name's Leslie Taylor, I'm the Communications Manager at the Lake Oswego Police Department. I'm also the current chair of the Clackamas C-800 Radio Group. And really, we wanted to come today to express our appreciation, not only for your efforts and your staff's efforts working towards a potential bond measure for us, but also to say thank you for the reimbursement resolution. While the city of Lake Oswego probably will not be taking advantage of that, we have agencies that are really going to benefit from the ability to have the bond compensate them for some rather large radio purchases that they were able to do early to prepare, to get ready for the system upgrade. So thank you for your consideration of that.
Thank you. And sir, you are John Hartsaw?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Chair Ludlow, Commissioners, thank you. As Leslie said, we appreciate your efforts. The C-800 system has been a great success since we implemented it 10 years ago, and it's time to upgrade the technology, and this is going to be the way to do it. And as Leslie expressed, we have some of the agencies that have done pre-purchases, and we want the ability to reimburse if, in fact, we are successful with a bond measure. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? Otherwise, we'll close the public portion and ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the resolution declaring the intent to reimburse the county and its partner emergency responder agencies for expenditures related to the replacement and upgrade of the C-800 emergency radio system and necessary components.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Smith. Discussion, Commissioner Bernard.
I just want to say that the reason this is being considered is they actually have to buy used parts or take parts out of old radios in order to get their radios to work. The fact that it's going from analog to digital, okay, make sure I didn't get that backwards. I think you might remember at one point TVs went through the same process, and your TV wouldn't work under certain circumstances unless it was digital. So this is very similar, and you said that in 2017, they're not even servicing them. It sounds like they're not servicing them now. And it's not dissimilar to what Windows does and a lot of our software does over the years. It's very expensive, but it's also very necessary because these are the radios that folks up in the mountains use to, you know, get past barriers and communicate with emergency services. And so while it's very expensive, I guess I do actually have a question. So if we're spending the money now, some of the money now, what happens if it doesn't pass?
Then we wouldn't, then we wouldn't be reimbursing folks for that, so.
And that includes ourselves?
Well, and the sheriff's office has been very good about putting in his budget the money necessary. And in fact, on the radio side, the reimbursement will only go as far as 50% of the charges. The agencies will have to pay the other 50%, but this gives them a little bit of relief if the, if the measure passes.
Right, and I'll also note, just for clarity, this resolution, because we intend to partner with the C-800 group, which consists of many jurisdictions, not just Clackamas County, it's authorizing reimbursement from bond proceeds to go to those various partner agencies, including, for example, the city of Lake Oswego, or, you know, any of our other fire districts, anyone else participating in the C-800 process.
Commissioner Savis?
So mine's more of a process question, and I understand that the, on, you know, on the page or in our board packet, you know, we basically declare the intent for the county to reimburse ourselves itself. And just the way the resolution reads, I don't know if it's just, it's the language, but we are convened at the Board of County Commissioners, but we're basically declaring intent to reimburse Clackamas County ourselves. There's no confusion as to which county we're reimbursing, but it just seems like we're in the second position in the way this is titled, but yet we are convened properly, we're not C-800, and so it just reads oddly.
Correct. Yes, that's, it is worded correctly. The, only the Board of County Commissioners, you did as yourself, can talk about a general obligation bond because you're the only one with the jurisdictional authority countywide. C-800 is not a municipal entity governed by the Board of County Commissioners, it's not a service district, it's a municipal partnership. And so it consists of a partnership of various municipal entities, fire districts, our sheriff, other police officers, 911 communications, that are joining effort to find the most efficient way to deliver emergency communication services. And our declaration of intent in this resolution is to ensure that each of those partners in C-800 also are eligible to receive reimbursement from the bond proceeds.
I just want to also, you know, just mention that during our employee recognition luncheon on Tuesday, we had a couple staff people from C-Com, C-800, C-800 there, and for our 911 communications, and they take about 200 calls a day, and in the summertime, about 400 calls a day. And communications is the utmost importance to all of public safety. And I know this will be before the voters in May, correct?
Correct.
And so just on behalf of, I believe the commission is supportive of this, that we encourage the voters to look at this very seriously and consider supporting the measure on behalf of all those calls and all those people and friends and family, probably unfortunately at some point in time are in dire need of emergency care, and those communications are the utmost important. So just want to convey that, take this opportunity to speak to the voters and the citizens out there to let them know our intent and why we're doing this.
Commissioner Schrader.
Well, you took the words right out of my mouth. That was something that I'm concerned about because this is a very large bond, but it's a public safety issue, is extremely necessary. This is about emergency communications, when folks need it, when they have the dispatch happen, and to make sure that our first responders get there in a timely way. And so I guess my question is, who is going to be, and this board is supportive of this because we see it as a critical infrastructure, it needs to happen, is there a group out there that's going to be working to make sure that the information gets out to the public so they understand that despite the size of this bond, that it is extremely necessary and it is critical for their own safety and for the continued infrastructure that we need in this county?
Yes, indeed, there is. That would be, the C-800 Radio Group is taking the lead on that, and I've been sitting in on their meetings now for, oh, not quite a year. And they've been doing a lot of pre-work, they did some pre-polling, and they're very organized about how they're doing their communications and coordinating communications, not only within our county, but between the two counties on this. So they're going to take the lead on that, and they've already been working on that and out in the community already, and that will be amping up here pretty soon. So that's, that's who's going to be taking the lead on the communications, and I'll be sitting in on the meetings just, just to keep track of it so that I can answer any questions you have as we go along.
You know, in almost every poll we ever do, public safety comes out number one, first, and there's a reason for that. You know, they often talk about the thin blue line enforcement, and I suppose there is a thin red line as far as emergency medical response. It is time that we brought communication into the 21st century, and I appreciate this money as being advanced because why buy old stuff? Might as well buy some new stuff. You know, we've been told that we've had to get replacement parts off of eBay used, and that's gone a little bit too far. The ask will be in May for a dime, a dime. Now, the average assessed value in Clackamas County is around $280,000, so that's $28 a year. And I assure people that will vote on this that it will go towards, again, enhancement, not just replacement, but enhancement. Clackamas County is huge, half of it's rural, half of it's urban, and that rural area is of great concern because I think, I was told by a deputy when I was very young, he used to go up fishing alone up in the woods of Clackamas County, that there's wild things happening up there. And at places up in the county forest where our sheriff's patrol, they don't have radios that work, they don't have cell phones that work, nothing works up there, and that's of grave concern. I've been told that we'll be putting some responders up there so that we'll have better coverage. Had the opportunity to meet with PGE President Jim Pirro this morning, and I told him of our ask for C-800, and he was very interested in that, and he thought that we could find some cost-saving measures because they, I mean, this is a power company, they have trouble in that same area being able to respond and communicate, and especially in the case of a disaster, we need more of those response towers up there. And so we may be able to partner with PGE at least, and the fact they're very excited about that, and possibly other service providers alike, so that we don't have to put up a bunch of different towers and certainly share the cost the same. So again, this is necessary or we wouldn't ask. It has actually been necessary for some period of time. This commission saw fit to pass it on to the voters, and yes, there will be an education outreach, I'm sure, which is allowed under law, for us to educate, again, outreach and people, and let them know what this says and what it means, and certainly what it means if we do not have it. And I would hope that there will be, and we've been told that there will be other people, including possibly the unions, who will get, become involved and help pass this measure. Any further comments?
All right, Mary?
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes 5-0. Thank you, Laurel.
Thank you.
All right, it's time for the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under elected officials, we have approval of previous business meeting minutes, and under community corrections, we have approval of a grant agreement number JR-15-032 with the state of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for the justice reinvestment funding of community correction programs. And that concludes this very short consent agenda.
That's a world's record, I think, really. Commissioners, you want to remove any of the few items we have on there? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Savis. Further discussion? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes 5-0. And now it is time for our county administrator update.
All right, I have three items for you this morning. One is, involves our WES director, Mr. Greg Geist. Yesterday, he kicked off what are going to be a series of public speaking engagements that are designed to raise awareness about the issue regarding our solids handling capacity with the Clackamas County Service District, number one, and the Tri-City Service District. Greg presented to the Clackamas County Business Alliance, and then he and Commissioner Savis joined the Rotary Club of Oregon City at lunch to give a detailed discussion about the county's co-investment strategy with the two service districts to address this urgent issue. The presentations, I thought, were well received and the events well attended. I think the really key message that comes from this is the savings that citizens and ratepayers within the two districts gain and benefit from by the partnership in a co-investment strategy towards dealing with our capacity needs there. So, well done, Mr. Geist, and thank you, Paul, for attending the Rotary Club as well. The other thing I wanted to make sure folks are aware of is that the latest edition of the Citizen News, our quarterly newsletter that's produced by the Public and Governmental Affairs Department, was mailed yesterday and should start arriving in residences' mailboxes sometime this week. This edition debuts a colorful and modern layout that is more user-friendly. The stories involve discussion about the WES solids issue, and that's under Krupp's Corner. And there's also a story in there about the NACO Prescription Drug Discount Card Program, as well as information about the marijuana land use regulations that were recently adopted by the board. So it's a, is a very full content issue. And I'm expecting to hear from my neighbor about it, too, again, so. The last thing I wanted to share, and I would expect we'd probably hear some more about this from Commissioner Smith, but I am pleased to report that this past Tuesday, we had the first meeting of the Willamette Falls Locks State Task Force, and it was right here on the Red Soils campus. The task force is a coalition of interested stakeholders, including state agency directors, state legislators, local citizens, and local elected officials, including Commissioner Smith. Its role will be to meet over the course of the coming year to determine and to energize the level of state interest in the Willamette Falls Locks. And I think we're proud that Clackamas County was the host for this very first meeting. We all look forward to learning the outcomes and seeing some progress on our, opening our locks. So that's what I have this morning.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
I will be reporting on it.
Time for Commissioner Communication. I'll start with Commissioner Schrader.
Well, let me start this morning with the arts and culture activities in the county. Let's pull that up first so I don't forget it. Okay, so what is going on this week in Clackamas County? Team Open Mic Night at the Youth Music Project for performers 13 to 20 years old. Come play two songs for a supportive, cheer-happy audience. Bring your guitar, voice, bagpipes, tambourines, et cetera, and share your music. Friday, January 15th, from 7:00 to 9:30. Performers sign in at 6:30 PM at the Youth Music Project in West Lynn. Here's one of my favorite things here. Peregrine Literary Series celebrates William Stafford's birthday. William Stafford passed away a few years ago. He is the poet laureate of Oregon. His son, Kim Stafford, is also a creative writer and a teacher at Lewis and Clark College and has written some, also some beautiful essays on the life of his father and his brother. So they have a legacy, the Stafford family has a legacy, in the state of Oregon, as well as nationally, of being literary, literary giants in a sense. So special guest, Brian Doyle, will be on hand to read from his publications. There will be an opportunity to share your favorite poem by or about William Stafford after the presentation. Sunday, January 17th, 3 PM at Holy Names Heritage Center in Lake Oswego. So I would encourage people to go to that. I actually met William Stafford a number of years ago when I was in a poetry workshop, and he told me to keep writing poetry, so I don't really know how I ended up here, but here I am anyway, so. Maybe I'll be the poet-writing commissioner at some point. Other than that, there's a number of things I wanted to report from the Association of Oregon Counties. We basically had a very, very robust meeting at our Veterans Committee this past Monday, where we are looking again at legislation for the short session, as well as the next legislative session, to help, to help our veterans. And Cameron Smith attended, and of course, he is the head of the Org Department of Veterans Affairs, and he offers us guidance as we move forward as commissioners at the state level and local level to make sure that our veterans get what they need. In particular, we had an update on the training opportunities for veteran service officers. One of the things the ODVA does is they make sure that the folks that we employ as VSOs have the continuing education and opportunity to network so they can continue to be successful, making sure our veterans get the things that they have earned because of their service to their country. I also started to kick off work on a housing task force this session. In the short session, there evidently is going to be quite a big omnibus bill dealing with affordable housing. The bill has not been dropped yet. At this point, we were given a page of what some of the concepts were, so we're going to be tracking that at AOC, and I know that we're going to be tracking it here. And I know that we're going to be tracking it here in this county because it's one of our priorities, is to see during this time when we are actually having a crisis in housing in Clackamas County, as well as across the state, for various reasons. So we're going to be looking at that task force and tracking this particular bill very, very closely at the state legislature. I also just got appointed to a work group, a state work group, by the Public Utility Commission. And basically, I will be working with Commissioner Kenimer. I will be having four meetings dealing with this. And what is the purpose of it? Well, it's a result of Senate Bill 32. And one of the things that we need to look at is access to natural gas infrastructure in underserved areas. The reason I was interested in this is because Estacada, for example, has land that is employment land out there. One of the holdups they have is because they do not have access to natural gas. It is actually a hurdle for them to actually attract the businesses they want out there in their industrial park. So I'll be working on this with Representative Kenimer. Oh, okay. And I will let people know what happens as we go on. It's going to be four meetings from now, January, through the spring and summer, and I was very delighted to be able to do that. Estacada Library District, I remember that library being built. I remember working on the campaign to make sure that we had a county-wide library district. And it's just a pleasure to finally see that the final piece of this whole plan has now finally fallen into place. And it took 10 or more years, but we made it. Thank you, Mr. Story. I think this was going on even before you were here, so it's nice to see it come to fruition. I did attend the Tourism Development Council meeting the other day. I'm the liaison, which means I'm not a voting member, but I listen in and I basically try to keep track of what they've been doing, and I have to tell you, their tourism numbers at this point in attracting people to this county are the highest that they have ever been. They have marketing campaigns in Austin, Texas. They have marketing campaigns throughout the state. They are working with Travel Oregon. They are working with Travel Portland. They are moving into the international markets, Germany being one area, and Oceania, that would be New Zealand and Australia. And I am telling you that we are becoming a tourism hub in this county because of our mountain, because of our rivers, because of our snow, because of our bike trails, because of our kayaking, because of the Madrone Wall, for example, that we are now looking at trying to make sure that people know that it can be a hub for rock climbing as well. So kudos to the Tourism Development Council. It was an excellent meeting, and these numbers just keep going up and up and up, and it's exciting to see that happen as part of our economic development plan. Okay?
Thank you, Commissioner Savis.
Well, as Administrator Crepp referenced, we had a couple of good meetings yesterday morning and presentations regarding wastewater. It was also great to see that on Monday evening, West Lynn passed a resolution, and I got my signed copy last evening, so it was great to see that. I'll make sure, distribute a copy to the commission so they can read that resolution. It's also nice to see that things appear to be calming down with regard to wastewater, and it's been a long haul. I know that when we signed the longstanding agreement in late 2012 with the city of Milwaukee that we put to end and put to rest a longstanding feud, and it was my hope that we could start then, in 2013, with trying to solve this capacity issue. We had a little three-year delay, but here we are, and we got the consultant underway, which we approved December 17th, the contract for the consultant to start the engineering on the project and the studying. So that's fantastic. And last night, we had a pretty nice meeting with the River Health Group, and the mayor of Johnson City was invited to sit at the table, and she made her contribution that evening, so it was nice to see her so warmly welcomed by the group. So I just want to say that's kind of pleasing to see things. I will say also that at the Rotary and also at the Clackamas County Business Alliance with the presentation, that the questions and the comments were really focused about the need, the technical aspects, and that was the focus. And I think it was very refreshing to really see everyone engage in trying to solve the problem, and that's where I think this board is committed to doing, to solving this problem. So kudos to West Lynn and to River Health and all the partners.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. To piggyback on what Martha said about affordable housing, it was discussed at MPAC this week. They have a whole bunch of stuff they're going to be presenting at the Affordable Housing Summit. But you know, that Monday is also the same as AOC, so I will probably go to AOC. And you might want to do the other. Anyway, at Association of Oregon Counties, I attended the Water Committee and the Public Lands and Natural Resource Committee. We had a report on the drought, and you can go on the Water Resources Department website and get our drought update. Just because it rained doesn't mean we're not out of a drought. As a matter of fact, our reservoirs are about 20% full. Detroit is probably one of the closest around here and the largest where people recreate. That is probably, it's not full, but they manage that for flood control for the spring. And if they don't, the city of Salem downstream would probably flood. And so I learned a lot about water. I'm attending this because I don't know much about water, and I find the discussions really fascinating and hugely complicated. Holy cow. As Mr. Crepp said, we had our first meeting of the State Task Force for opening and repairing the Willamette Falls locks right over here, across from the Blue Herring Project. Barbara Roberts is our convener. We have state representatives, senators on there, along with a couple of mayors, myself, experts in the field, historical, and it was a really, really great meeting. We're ready to roll up our sleeves and do the hard work of trying to figure out how we're going to open them, who the ownership will be, what we're going to do with them. And it's just very exciting, and I'm happy to be a part of the project. Recently, very recently, I just became a life member of VFW Auxiliary Post 1324. Here's my little card. I was able to join, I've always had a big interest in the veterans and all the things they do. I was able to join because my grandfather served in World War I in France. My uncle served in World War II in the Pacific, and he was on an aircraft carrier that was bombed and sunk, and he survived and floated in the ocean for a while, but I couldn't join because of him. And my father-in-law was a Marine in the Korean War, but I couldn't join because of him. I had to follow my own bloodline, which is kind of, didn't even think about my grandfather, but he had a very interesting past, and so I did it so I could support that particular VFW post. You know, they're fixing up the place. It's over here in Tombwater that overlooks the falls. They're really fixing it up because some of those folks are getting a little older in age, and they told me because we are getting older in age, we want to be able to turn it over to the next generation and have it be in good working order. And this commission gave them a grant from our small grants program, and they've really done some nice, nice repairs, remodeling the kitchen, the bathrooms. And so I'm just going to try to be a part of them and experience their history, which I love history. So I'm very happy about that. Here at the county, we're doing weigh-ins for The Biggest Loser on the fourth floor. We have probably 20 people who are doing it, and so it's a competition to see who can lose the most weight. It's something we all need to do, so that's a lot of fun. And last but not least, the dogs, Mary. This is Skylar. He is a nice, older gentleman who needs a home for his retirement years. His tail wags softly to show that he likes visitors and is very polite. He walks calmly on a leash when outdoors, and he takes treats gently. A warm, soft bed, healthy food, and tender-loving care will make his senior years truly golden. You can make that happen by visiting Skylar today. For more information about Skylar and other adoptable dogs, please call Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs to visit Skylar and any other animal you want to adopt.
Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you. I'm the co-chair of the Association of Oregon Counties Public Safety Committee, and we got an update on the marijuana legislation and some fixes that they need to make. So there's a lot of fixes, and they're working on that, so I expect a bill coming out of the legislature to make some of those fixes. We also talked about the justice reinvestment grant dollars. Those monies are possible because we are working hard to reduce prison population, to avoid the cost of building a new prison, or moving prisoners into another facility and investing a lot of time, money, and staff to do that. And it's interesting is that the reason there is a population problem with prisons is the population of women go into prison, which is kind of different. So there will be, there is going to have to be an investment of approximately $2 million to open up another facility in eastern Oregon that's a little larger and move those people into that facility. It already exists. It's not been open for a while, but it takes about $2 million to get it staffed up and brought back into working condition. We also heard from Judge Grassi, who is the...
Grassley.
It's Grassi.
It's Grassi. Remember how he described how you pronounce it?
It's but an L-Y at the end.
No, it's not.
Anyway, he is a judge. It's interesting, but counties are not always created equal. And actually, the old saying is, if you've been to one county, you've been to one county. If you go to conferences, in national conferences, you'll find all these different names for different members of the commission. You know, they're very different, not only that, the size. But he judges, I believe, juvenile issues, and so he gets training on how to do that. But he gave us an update about what's been happening in Harney County, and frankly, it was pretty scary. But, you know, I think they're doing a really good job, and I understand that tomorrow there will be a meeting somewhere, not on county facilities, to meet with the folks and try to resolve this issue. Yesterday, we had another budget meeting. I think it's our second, right? And I think the one thing important about our budget is, yes, we have challenges, but Clackamas County did really well in a really tough economy. We were diligent in making sure we had the reserves and the support of our citizen members of the Budget Committee. We really, I think it's amazing how Clackamas County did. My guess is better than most, I'm sure, more than most counties in the state of Oregon, and probably better than a lot of counties in the US. But, you know, we have some challenges, of course, but we, you know, I think with the efforts of our citizens and this board, we will continue to have a state of the county that I would say is strong. Also attended the CCBA, Clackamas County Business Alliance, meeting where the Director of West presented. I thought he did a great job. Pretty simple. If we don't invest, we won't build. And if we don't build, Clackamas County, housing prices will continue to grow, you know, and there will be less housing, and frankly, Clackamas County won't be a great place to live unless we can provide adequate housing at a reasonable price. So a moratorium would take place if we don't resolve this problem, and this board has stepped up to move forward. And the Director of West is presenting to various community member organizations to present the information, I think is invaluable. Other than that, oh, last night, I attended the North Clackamas Park and Recreation District Board Meeting. I am a liaison, as is Paul, and I don't loathe, I just thought of that. But interesting, the flood damage, for example, that we experienced at a number of our parks, which I didn't know about until last night, was not substantial, about $50,000. But that's just part of those amounts that the county is accumulating to present to Thema for maybe some reimbursement, and they did meet with Thema. One of the biggest expenses, actually, is the bridge in Milwaukee. Not the one that is on McLaughlin, but the one that you drive onto to get to Milwaukee's Riverfront Park, which is now closed. It could be for quite some time, could cost $800,000 to fix, because the footings have been washed out. And we had an opportunity at one time to actually give this bridge to Milwaukee. We should have done it, but we didn't. And so it's significant. And so all that money Milwaukee invested in the Riverfront Park is not going to be utilized until that bridge is completed. Also, the logs and stuff that washed down the river built up on that boat dock, all the way from the surface to the bottom of the river. And they had to pull them out around the dock. I guess they did it three times to get the pressure off the dock. So I think that sometime in the future, we ought to talk about, I guess Lake Oswego has a similar issue, but what they do is they have something a little bit upstream to capture those logs, and that's something that Milwaukee and Clackamas County Parks ought to look at considering in the future. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the sheriff has had a presence down south as well, our sheriff has, and I got a call from Judge Grassi also thanking us for our participation. There were many different jurisdictions down there helping out, and rightfully so. We all just hope it'll all go away here soon voluntarily, without any violence, threatened violence, I guess it is true. I had the opportunity to meet with President Joanne Truesdale, Clackamas Community College, this last week, specifically to talk about facilities. They got passed a $90 million bond last year, and they're planning for that. And my emphasis, because of my former athletic past, has been in athletics. There was a gentleman named Robert Randall, who was one of the biggest builders in Oregon, is now deceased, great man. When Wilsonville High School was built, because we are the subsidiary in a lot of ways to West Lynn, even though the city of Wilsonville pays more in school taxes than the city of West Lynn does, it has one-third of the students. They built the stadium, but they didn't have any cover for the home team, the spectators. So I asked Robert Randall to give me money, and I asked him for a lofty sum, and he gave it to me, over $200,000 cash. So we built the cover, and we put up a plaque, and I pulled one of his quotes out of a newspaper that said the following. "Education coupled with a competitive spirit are two primary tenants of success in life." So I shared that with President Truesdale, because, you know, there were some promises made for athletics, and as is typical with these things, they may not be kept. And, you know, we talk about the arts and how important that is to our students, but if you really look at some of the most successful CEOs in our nation, they were athletics supporters and participants as well. So that was a nice discussion. Again, I mentioned that I met this morning with the President of PGE, Jim Piro, a great guy who's, and really, PGE is at the forefront of emergency management and preparedness. And in fact, they've been ahead of everybody else for a long time. Clackamas County is ready to. Nancy Bush does a great job in coordinating, especially, you know, activities during the flood, when we had a fire, high wind problems. Clackamas County and Nancy Bush, the director of that, do an absolutely outstanding job. Next week, several of us are going up to Mr. Crepp's home stopping grounds in Thurston County, way up north, to view a jail up there because it's supposedly one of the most modern ones around. Not that we have the funds to do the same, by the way, but it's always nice to dream, is it not? And Mary Rathke, we've got to give her credit. I don't know if she deserved credit, but she started this weight loss thing, idea. And, you know, losing weight is great, but the process is terrible, because there is the adage, do you live to eat or eat to live? And unfortunately, I'm probably on the wrong side of that. So, yeah. So, yeah, I'm a participant, and it's a real giant pain. The, I think everybody who's buying property out there, you know, we recently had the landslide situation in Oregon City. Now, those are rentals. But if you're going to buy a piece of property, I strongly recommend that you come into the county and check out all of our resources before you buy. Now, specifically, you talk about up in the mountains, especially there, because there is historic landslide areas, there is historic flood areas. And the new LiDAR mapping reveals a lot of historic problems and probably, possibly some future problems, especially in regards to flooding. It is, there is one subdivision up there that years ago, Clackamas County said, you can't build there because it's going to flood. The owners went to LUBA, the Land Use Board of Appeals, got that overturned, the people got to build, and a lot of their houses were washed away, just like we said. So, you know, that authority to be able to say, don't build there, has to be absolute, and we have to be protected from lawsuit on that kind of thing, because, you know, we're really trying to help people out when they think we're trying to restrict their private property rights in this particular situation. The, we've had some recent correspondence about the Newburgh Dundee Bypass. It's an interesting question about what it will do to the city of Wilsonville because of that, and so that is an ongoing conversation. The, I'm happy to say that we are almost completely done with our labor negotiations with the unions. Almost, and I really appreciate the unions and certainly their flexibility and their agreement. And I'll end it with a quote from Franklin Delano Roosevelt. "The best customer of American industry is the well-paid worker." So, ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business before the commission this day, this meeting is adjourned.